Good evening. Welcome to Board of Trustees meeting for Grand Blank Township for Tuesday, March 7th. If we could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Robertson, can you call the roll, please?
I would be happy to call the roll, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, of course, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven members present, a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Approval of the agenda. Somebody care to make that motion?
Ms. Hugo makes the motion.
Motion by Hugo?
Supported by your...
Supported by Fike.
Fike?
Okay. I thought I saw his hand go up.
He actually had to stand up before me.
Who did?
Supervisor's discretion on this. Okay, we're, um, on the agenda. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we will entertain any public comments. We have public comment cards over here. If anybody wishes to make a comment, we ask that you fill one of those out. But I don't see anybody rushing to the microphone, so I'll assume that means no public comment.
Okay.
So we'll close public comment and bring it back here to the board. And at this time, we have a special recognition, and we would ask Chief Rennie to please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to call and recognize Officer Tim Bieke, or Sergeant now, Tim Bieke, up to the stand. So, Tim? Can you come up here, please? So first off, I'd like to introduce Tim to everybody. I think everybody here knows him, however, the public does not know him. But Tim Bieke has been with us for 18 years, and I could say probably over the past five years, I have truly seen Tim develop into the leader that he stands before us today. Tim was one of those guys who I could always rely on, no matter what. He's always in the public eye, whether it be with the kids at Camp Safety that he puts that together, the Citizens Police Academy, National Night Out, he is very helpful. He is my go-to guy, actually, for getting things done. So throughout Tim's career, he has been a field training officer, training our new personnel. He's been a crime prevention officer, a crash investigator, a background investigator, the list goes on. He's been assigned to our detective bureau, and he also plays a major role in the Coffee with the Cop and Salvation Army Kettlebell Challenge that we do every year with the fire department. So, that's about Tim Bieke. So, Tim, I'd like for you to call up a person or persons of your choosing, and we're going to go over the oath.
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate it. I would call everyone, but there's not room. Call my wife, Chrissy, and I'm in another jacket. Stand by my side, too, all of us.
If you could hold that?
Sure.
And at the end, you could go ahead and do the badge pinning. All right, raise your right hand. Hi, insert name.
Hi, Tim Bieke.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state?
The Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of Grand Blank Township Police Department?
The duties of the Office of Grand Blank Township Police Department.
And in and for the Township of Grand Blank?
Paid in for the Township of Grand Blank.
Of County of Genesee?
County of Genesee.
And State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Thanks, Chief. Good show. Congratulations.
Sir, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Motion to adjourn.
So Chief, I've got a question. Maybe the public would be interested to know, what process do we go through for selecting people of this rank?
So the process that we go through is that there's a written test. There is some performance points that the administration staff, they consider stuff like training, education, attendance, absenteeism, performance evaluations, and then there is a panel, interview panel, from the outside that comes in, and then we compile all those scores to see who scores in the top three, and then it is the chief's choice to pick out of those top three for the promotion.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations again on behalf of the board. So, very proud. Okay, we will continue on with our agenda. I know all of you might not want to stay for the rest of the agenda.
Bye!
I thought we were a little bit more popular than that, but...
Whole place clears out. It's because they have so much confidence in what we do that, you know? Okay. Alrighty. We're just getting to the good part, too.
Just pull on the door, it'll shut. There you go.
Okay, now, item six, approval of consent agenda, Mr. Supervisor.
So at this time, I'll seek a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Dr. Raridan.
Motion.
Supported by Mr. Fike.
Supported by Fike. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Under old business, our strategic plan update for the Point North Business District, and we have Ms. Roberts here this evening. Good evening.
As before Melissa starts, Melissa had, whose phone?
Might be Bill's. I mean Chief's.
Before she starts, I just want you guys to know that Executive Coordinator Melissa Roberts has put together for our strategic plan updates, planned us out through the year so that rather than each time we're like, what's coming up next or whatever, we've, she's actually put a calendar together, and then we've let everybody know who's working on those, what dates they should expect to be here to provide updates. I think that's going to be really helpful, so just kind of give you the heads up on how that's going to roll out for the remainder of the year. We can send that schedule out so you guys can see what it is. Anytime that you want to move something up, obviously, we can do that at any time, just let us know. But thanks to Melissa, it's going to be much more organized than it has been in the past. I think this will work out very, very well. Also, before she gets started on the Point North Business District, this really has been, you know, between Supervisor Bennett and Melissa have really been driving this thing and getting everybody involved and bringing people in, so when we hand this off to her, there's a reason for that. This is a lot of work that's being done by Melissa, so thank God she's here because she's the one who's really driving this forward for us.
Very good. I like the idea of the schedule, too, though. That will be helpful, to have a schedule of what items are covered on the strategic plan.
It's nice because we make sure to hit every item?
Right.
At least twice during the year.
Yeah.
So, and then if we want to add different items throughout?
Sure. We need to move something up, or something needs to change, whatever.
Absolutely. Right. Okay, so where we're at with Point North right now, I feel like we're getting a lot of momentum going. We are moving forward with the signage to designate the district. We talked to Row Engineering last week about putting together a proposal to connect to the sidewalks from Hill Road to Maple Road on Saginaw. Not that we're putting forth the money to do this right at this point, but as grants and other monies become available, we like to have that ready to go, and we've been working on so many grants lately, and it's like, okay, you have two weeks to put this grant together, so having that ready to go is going to be extremely helpful for us. I also applied for a community foundation grant for planters and flowers to be placed at businesses along Saginaw Road and at the point, so we're really, we should hear about that grant in the next couple of weeks. They're actually turning it around very quickly for us, so that would be incredible for us to have that. And then we were awarded an energy efficiency grant, so because our community is the size that it is, we were awarded this grant. It's $76,000, and Superintendent Limada and I have discussed using that money toward lighting along Saginaw Road. We all know that lighting is an issue along Saginaw. This is one of the things that the business owners really want to see, is improved lighting and improved safety from the lighting. Something else that Police Chief Rennie and I discussed were, I'm trying to remember exactly what they're called, they're cameras. Plot cameras.
What kind of camera?
Plot cameras, so they read license plates.
Okay.
So if there's any suspicious activity in the area, you know, they could pick up. That would be another safety item that hopefully, again, you know, this is something for the future, something that, once we have some, maybe some quotes on, then as these grants come available, we can?
Sure.
Very quickly.
You're ready.
Those put out. Our next meeting with the business owners, and, well, I should say the committee as a whole, is March 21st at 11:00 a.m. It's going to include the committee, and then we're also going to have Jill Bame from Giffords Webster there, and she's going to discuss a pattern book. So that just means how we want the businesses, not cookie cutter businesses, but just a general idea of how we...
Design concepts.
Some design concepts, thank you.
So, yeah, the idea is, you know, I like the idea of having those things ready, because if a grant comes available, you know, with regard to sidewalks, or, you know, the lighting, what have you, I mean, we're working on the lighting anyways, but?
Right.
All that stuff, it's great to have it ready, so we can throw it into a grant if we find one that pops up.
Absolutely, and just that one, you know, we're fortunate enough to be one of the communities that's large enough to be given that.
Fabulous.
So.
So the pattern book, just so everybody has an idea that, actually, this is something that the business owners said that they would like to see, that, you know, if we talked about having a revolving loan fund for businesses possibly to do something to the fronts of their business along Saginaw Street here, and they said, well, we need some ideas on what you guys would like to see, you know, and not that we want to have some Bavarian theme or something like this, but, you know, what is it that would be acceptable? What is it that you're looking for? And so, we're going to have Ms. Bame from Giffords Webster kind of talk a little bit about what other communities have done like this, I guess, and put together a pattern book so that we can say, yeah, we like this and that, because the last thing we want to do is have a revolving loan fund that funds something that everybody's like, we funded that, you know? So it'll go a long ways, I think, to helping the business owners, but it is something that they ask for, and I think would be very helpful. The planters, too, that Ms. Roberts speaking of, that she found and researched are phenomenal. I'm not sure, I think we're talking about, what, 12 of them or 15?
12 planters to start with, but they're self-watering, and that part of it was very appealing, because otherwise, we're paying labor?
Right.
You know, for people to go out, and so now they have to water them two to three times, or every two to three weeks?
Plus, they're 500 pounds.
Rather than four days.
They're like 500 pounds with the water in them, too.
Yes, which was also very appealing to me, because no one's going to want to take those. They're very attractive.
Yeah.
And we have the quotes for the flowers, too, in the grant, so, and actually, a water tank to put on the back of one of our DPW trucks, so when we do water, we have that.
So with those that go between Maple Road and probably like Hill or something like that, so. Any questions for Ms. Roberts? Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And we are researching the point down there, too, where the sign is at the Chase Bank, too, so that's something that we want to work on. Okay, ARPA report update. Mr. Limada?
This is really, again, this is a tracker that Executive Coordinator Melissa Roberts put together so that we can keep a running total of where we are on ARPA funds. You had 3.845 million dollars total in ARPA funds. We've allocated quite a bit of it, the biggest chunk, obviously, 1.4 million dollars to the Baldwin Road Fire Station remodel. The others were in the $100,000 range, but just so that you guys see, have that running total to see where we are in that process. We did meet with the PFM financial asset managers that we used to do our investments yesterday, and we talked a little bit about the remaining ARPA funds, and we'll probably have that in front of the board through the month of April so that we can kind of lock it down, because right now with the way interest rates are, if we can lock something down for another year, even if it's a million dollars, if we don't plan on spending the bulk of that, be a good time to do it, because you've got rates in the 5% after being historically low, and if we can lock something down for a little longer term, if we know it'll be nine months, great, but I wanted to leave it open until we've allocated the rest of it. There's a couple of projects that are going to come before you. Again, we still have, we're working on getting the estimates for the HVAC system for this building. Well, I don't have those yet, and I think that one may be, obviously, like a much bigger investment, but I thought it would also factor into our discussion about our overall campus plan and how long we're going to remain in this building, and if this building will remain viable for an additional use before we put like 1.4 million dollars or something into HVAC system to find out that, you know, we don't need to be that complex in the system. So kind of, we got some moving parts. We wouldn't intend to do that project probably in 2023, it would be a 2024 project anyway. We have to have the money at least allocated by the end of December 2024 and spent by the end of 2026.
Questions for Mr. Limada? Okay. Yes, it was a very good meeting with the investment. I'm glad you all have them here at an upcoming meeting. Okay, under new business, the board will consider a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute all purchase orders up to $75,000 for upgrades to bicentennial park storage and bathroom building. Do you have Ms. Limada with us this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the storage and bathroom building that's near the baseball fields out at the park, we really would like to, there's like, when you first walk in, it's like main storage area, and then there's like a little area kind of in the corner that there's the safe for concessions as well as just like storage for concessions. We're going to take that smaller area and turn it into the concession stand. Right now, we're using a trailer that we've had for a long time. We just think that this is going to be a better route for us, so we're looking at doing that. Some upgrades then would be flooring for this building. That'll also extend into the bathrooms, so we're going to try to upgrade those a little bit as well, but the bulk of it's really going to be, we'll take this, so we say the same building, but we'll cut a window out of it and then use the concession, kind of like one of those roll-up windows will go there, so it'll be right on the side of that building. So that is what we're looking to do. It's going to kind of, you know, be in piecemeal, so this is, the approval's going to be for the, all of the improvements.
Okay. Very good. Yes, Ms. Hugo?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, you're making a motion, okay. Do we have support?
Motion.
Mr. Fike?
Motion by Hugo, supported by Fike.
Any discussion, any questions, concerns?
Item 8A. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, the board will consider Resolution 23-8 to purchase a fitness court, including installation, for a total of $140,000, and authorize the Township Superintendent to execute all related purchase orders. Ms. Limada?
So the National Fitness Court reached out to Superintendent back in November-ish, and he sent it to me and asked me to look into it, so I started having conversations with them. Priority Health of Michigan was offering a grant for this, and so we applied just to see, it's not, you know, non-binding, you could just apply to it and see what type of funding you would get. So I sent our application in December. We just heard back from about two weeks ago. We got $40,000 to go towards the court. The overall cost of the court is $155, so then we got the $40,000 grant. There's also an installation fee, so that's where you'll see the 140 that we would owe to do that. So I'm just really presenting this to you. It is just an option, something for you to look at. I have a video that I'm going to show, so you guys get an idea of what the fitness court is, what it looks like.
Fitness court.
And it would go at the bottom of the sledding hill, if you're familiar with bicentennial, so the sledding hill, of course, is utilized a lot, that hills and drills program in the summer, they use the hill to do intervals and sprints. There's also people who just use that sledding hill as kind of a base to start their workouts, like fitness groups go there, so we think it would be a great spot for it. But I'll show the video, and then after, if you guys have any questions, we can talk about that as well.
Make sure that you're switched over to this. Your plug in, sending, before you start playing it, let me know, I need to...
I am plugged in.
Okay, hold on just a second before you play it. I just need to make sure it's switched over to you. Wow. I'm going to say it's not a success. It's like I might be trying. There we go, something. Hold on a second, this might be it. That's not it, just a second. I think it's this one here, just hold on a second.
You didn't have me looking at it earlier, so it's the first click.
Okay, I think it's coming to you right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Hopefully.
I hear Keith's saying "buffet".
I know. I'm tempted to refresh it.
Loading.
Because I'm not patient. Let's try that again.
We're changing the way we are, our things about fitness. With 200 fitness courts open, our campaign is growing. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere, and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Managel, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. The National Fitness Campaign was founded in 1979 when we opened the first fitness center. Redesigned for the 21st century, the fitness court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to use your own bodywork to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives, so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Mission Deanders, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the fitness court was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy, that they want to provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained, delivered classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the fitness court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled to introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court, using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. Building beyond 200 cities and colleges, we're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within 10 minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that, from a city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come, presented to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
We serve almost 1.2 million members across Michigan, and this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free health and wellness opportunities for our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations, big and small, to explore the opportunity to invest in fitness courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise $150 million to bring the campaign to 1,000 cities and schools building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world-class fitness free.
So what they recommend is that we look to get the funding, or know that we have the funding to go forward, and then you would look to find sponsors after that and backfill that, so we could still find more funding, you know, to cover some of our costs through sponsors. On the wall, there's a large donor wall where all of these businesses' names would be able to be displayed, so that is something, you know, of course, that we would pursue right away. It's just they need that confirmation of funding to move the project forward, but then they do recommend, and they'll work with us, to continue to find more sponsors, you know, to help cover some of the costs that we might incur to do this. I reached out and talked to them about some of the questions that you guys might have. So one of them was how long is the court expected to last, and they anticipate roughly a lifespan of 25 to 50 years with a very minimal maintenance. Also, being where we live, I asked about, you know, the icy and snowy conditions in the winter months. They said that they have 43 states currently that the fitness court at Fort Myers Beach just withstood the hurricane with no damage, and they have two fitness courts in Traverse City that have had no issues, as well as the Rocky Mountains at Colorado State and upstate New York. So also not a concern there.
Very nice. Yes, Clerk Robertson?
You mentioned that this would be placed at the, at the foot of the hill?
Yeah, so we would set it back a little bit, just because when kids are sledding, of course, we want that still that area, yeah, of course, so it's going to be...
While they gather up some speed, we don't want to run...
Yes, no, of course, so it's going to be set back more, so if you're familiar with where the sledding hill pavilion is, it's going to be pushed back, kind of more setback behind that.
Okay.
So close, but, you know, enough room for the, when the sledding is going on, it's not going to interfere with it.
And the, the things that we saw in the film, are they fixed in position? I mean, they can't be vandal, well, they could be vandalized, but could they be stolen, or?
No, yeah, so it's all fixed, and they come in and they secure all of this, and they set up the whole court and everything, so it's not a concern with that. And they said very minimal maintenance, so it's just really just kind of, you know, getting leaves off the court and different things like that to maintain that it's, you know, a clear space, but other than that, it's not too much that our, our staff would have to go in and do.
Okay. Drainage, is there like water gathering, or on the, I mean, is it, is that part of it, too, or?
That, I mean, I don't know specifically about drainage on the court and what that looks like. I can absolutely reach out and get answers for you on that.
Just they have it in Traverse City, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they have something figured out, since they have it.
It'd be interesting to know what they do, you know, for that, but...
Just thinking about the elements, you know?
Right, yeah.
I'm heading to Traverse City in two weeks, so I'll check it out. I mean, I'm not going to use it, but, just to be honest.
That's required. Yeah, that's my only concern, is I might get hurt out there.
Yep.
Mr. Raridan?
What do you think, the utilization? I mean...
So I can tell you that hills and drills is very, very popular on Wednesday nights. It's a free fitness that they're able to do at the sledding hill all summer long, very well-attended, and I know that there are a lot of groups that go and meet at the sledding
Yep.
Mr. Raridan, Dr. Raridan?
What do you think, the utilization? I mean...
So I can tell you that hills and drills is very, very popular on Wednesday nights. It's a free fitness that they're able to do at the sledding hill all summer long, very well-attended. And I know that there are a lot of groups that go and meet at the sledding hill to do different workouts, you know, different teams will meet there for training and things like that. And, you know, they believe that having the court so close to a bike path where ours would be located means that there's going to be optimal use of it. I can't, you know, guarantee you exact numbers of how many people will use it, but they do think that it'll be well utilized, especially where the location of where we would be putting ours.
Bet it gets utilized pretty well, but... Yes, Ms. Hugo?
I may have missed this. Is this free to the community by using the app?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
The app would be free. And they recommend, too, that you do different activation things. Some of them were, you know, partnering with different gyms or something to, you know, to get people out there and kind of like show them what it looks like, that activation period. And then, of course, they would just be free to, to use it whenever. And those activation things could be free as well. They actually gave us the idea of doing like a firefighters versus police officers, like, fitness thing. They said that that goes over really well in some of the other communities, so...
Challenge the, the fire department could challenge the police department out there.
You guys love the idea? You guys in?
Versus the, versus the board of directors, too.
Yeah, yes.
Winner. Okay.
Start.
Ms. Hugo?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, motion by...
What are we making the motion on?
Motion is on the resolution 23-8. 23-8. Is there support?
Yeah.
Support by Dr. Raridan.
Motion by Hugo.
Supported by...
Supported by Raridan.
We've got some questions, though, before we move forward. Mr. Fike?
Is this what Grand Blank is doing? Same thing?
Mm-hmm. And I asked them about that, if that was a concern, that we're going to be replicating something that the city is doing. And they actually said it's great that they want, like, because then their theory is, too, that you would be able to get on, you know, sidewalks, bike path, go from the cities to ours. And they really, they want these courts all over. They want it to be easily accessible along these bike paths. And they, and they think it's great. Part of it was, you know, looking into where our area is, and to make sure it was going to be like a highly viable and successful area. And that's why we got the grant for it. And they spent a lot of time, too, on, you know, on Zoom calls, talking about exactly where the location that we're going to put it, just to make sure that it will be well utilized, because that's important to them. And of course, you know, the Priority Health giving the grants out, they want it to be in specific areas in Michigan that they know it's going to be successful.
We have, you know, quite a few apartment buildings over there. We've got a lot of people that go to Bicentennial Park, that whether it's riding, running, it's amazing how many people actually go over there for fitness. Kirk Robertson?
Just, a question occurred to me. Are there differing types of the, I mean, in terms of the features offered, like, very, like varying features, so that we could have a nuanced difference between the township, what the township provides, maybe a different exercise experience in the township versus the city, and widen the horizons of athletic activity?
So with the app, it is the, the set seven workout circuits that you're doing. There are other options, like you can add, so the fitness court is like half of a tennis court. You could add another one on that's just like an open area that allows people to do, you know, like free weight things, or ab workouts and things like that. It's just more of a free space. And they said that that's well utilized for yoga and different things like that, Pilates, things like that.
Well, then the question I would have is, do we want to make ours substantively different than the city, if the city's doing one of these?
You can look into it. There's also the option of doing that art wall. It's, it's going to be like $40,000 more if you want to do that, because the Priority Health logo will go, it's just the basic design that they have. They have, the Priority Health will be on it. And then, of course, all of our donors can go on the wall. But if you want to, you have the option to have an artist come out, or you can even choose different art. You're just looking at a higher cost. So, and then it would look different, but you are going to look at it at a higher cost with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Fike, and then Mr. Kilmer.
So I want to just get the, the finances straight. The grant is for $40,000.
Yes.
Project cost how much again?
So the fitness court itself is 155, and then the installation is $25,000. So that's another part. And then the only other thing that we would need to look at is getting the concrete poured. But that would be something we could, you know, go out for, for bids on that and stuff, so...
We have friends in the concrete business, right?
Yeah, so if we could get that, that'd be great.
One other thing. What if somebody falls and breaks their neck, or their arm, or, you know, gets hurt on this? What is the liability for something like that?
Mr. Lemina, or, or...
Well, that's all I was thinking about when I was watching that video. But we are, so one of the things that we have in terms of our statutory options for providing service recreation, and, and if it were up to the lawyers, there wouldn't be a sledding hill, there wouldn't be any sort of activity where you could possibly hurt yourself. But I think that, that I need to reassure myself, that we have governmental immunity when we are participating in activities that we're statutorily authorized to participate in. And while this is, in my opinion, as a lawyer, complicated, I think that, that we, I, I, I think that the public policy providing active recreation for our residents, particularly when we have governmental immunity for that kind of activity, I think, I think it offsets any sort of liability fears that we would have. And this equipment is pretty obvious. It, one of the things we could explore, I guess, is use equipment at your own risk, or, or something like that. But this is the kind of equipment, I think, that's, that's not going to cause us any liability issues.
Okay, so I'm sure that the owners of this, of this group has faced this issue, or this question, and all the other ones.
As far as, you know, people being hurt on that, they didn't relay anything to me about that front. Of course, something I can follow up with and then answer that question for you, just what they've dealt with in the past, or with other, you know, municipalities, or whoever has them, and then get an answer for that.
Okay.
With 90 teams of softball or baseball players being out there on any given weekend, swinging bats, with balls going 90 miles an hour, I've got to believe a few people have gotten hit by several of those items. And like, like David, Mr. Laddie said, you know, if it was up to attorneys, we probably wouldn't have any fun out at parks, right? So...
Is there an age restriction on...
So, well, I think we can find out what the thousand other municipalities have done. But I mean, there are skateboard parks, you know, in parks, there's, you know, bike pump tracks that people install, and none of those...
Playgrounds. We have two playgrounds.
We have two playgrounds.
Slash pad.
Which probably lead to more, you know, responsible for more injuries in, in children under a certain age level.
We aren't reinventing the wheel here. I mean, this is something that parks all over the country are doing. But Mr. Kilmer had his hand up.
You were talking about the, the liability, the, when we first did the skate park...
Yeah.
Over in the middle school parking lot.
Okay.
We had to get somebody to fund the insurance, the liability, otherwise. And that was what the school says. If you can get insurance, you can have it. But...
Right.
So is there anything as far as somebody funding the liability?
We already have coverage for it.
We've got blanket liability on everything in the park.
So, so because we own the park, I mean, it, this is interesting. And I want to, I will just take a second to bring up an, an issue that's positive for, for Senia's initiative. And that is the creation of a, of an LLC that would handle liability issues potentially that the, that the township didn't want to handle. It's called the Friends of Grand Blank Parks Recreation. I was thinking about that while we were seeing this presentation. And I, and I, I understand the desire of, of folks to either shift liability or shift ownership into a different entity. But I think, given our, our comprehensive insurance policy, and given the fact that we own the park, I, I think that we're not going to have any trouble with insurance. And if we do, I mean, this is something that we're going to want to obviously check with our insurance company or our carrier before we put a shovel in the ground. I don't see that being a problem at all. And, and I do, even though we do have this potential liability corporation out there, I don't think we need to use it for this case.
Walt's had their, Mr. Fike?
Oh, so, just getting the math again. So it's 155 plus 25, so it's 180? And then you, with the $40,000 grant on top of that, or subtracted from that?
So subtracted from the $40,000 grant, then. And there's some other, like I said, the, the concrete might be a possibility. The installation fee, they're saying it's 25 to 27. So that's also kind of a, a rough idea there. But what we're looking at is, is that cost of the fit court is the main one, and then the installation fee, and then the rest, like I said, they're, they're more variable. But those two, we know for sure.
Then we can go after grants and donations and contributions.
Yeah, yep. And then we'll be able to look for sponsors after that.
Are we thinking, I, I mean, I actually like the idea of the mural wall. Is this something that, because actually you have 140, and then, let's say, 25, so that's 165. Or, right? And, and so the 180, I, I'm a little...
So the, the 140, though, that's $25,000 for installation, and 115 for the fitness court, for a total of 140.
Okay, so it's a total of 140. And so if we added the wall, that would, you're thinking that's 40,000?
It's a significant cost. I mean, I think, if you're interested in that, I can absolutely get you the, you know, the pricing on what it would be like to have the, the art, and, you know. I can give you the pricing, too, on that addition, if you wanted that court in the back as well, that, you know, it's just, there are additions to it, but you...
I mean, I'm thinking if we, if we do it, we should do it right. I mean, but in your note, Dennis, I think you said we could use ARPA funds for this?
Yeah, so that's an option. We have both millage funds. There's money in our, in our reserve balance for millage funds. We also have ARPA funds. This would be ARPA-eligible for the 140. I think the other thing that's a key piece, though, is that donor wall. Don't forget, that's how most municipalities go after this thing, is to go out and look for donations to help offset this, and to get their names on that donor wall. And I think you could really go, you know, talk to the Crem, talk to the healthcare, like McLaren Health, that doesn't want to pay any taxes, like, quarters building, and see if they might want to donate something towards...
Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we look for those. Maybe it's the rehab facilities and physical therapists that would like to get their name on there. I think we could bring that cost down considerably by building out that donor wall.
And we could continue to add to the donor wall, too. It isn't like it's once and done, I would think. We pick up sponsors along the way, we can add them to the wall.
Senia, so if, they have these in Traverse City, right? So does the app, if you have the app down here, does it work up there and vice versa? So it's, and there's seven standard exercise areas?
Yep.
And, and those standard are on all of these, though, I mean, right?
Yeah, the only, as far as customization goes, there's a million different options for this artwork. For example, like your, you know, say we wanted to put the bobcats on the back, like, that's an option for pricing. There is an art collection that's another $100,000. You can get signature art by this guy. To do local artists, it's 25K. And then to do, like, certain colors, you can pick from some of their designs. That's 13.5. And then there's, you can even customize the color. Instead of doing the blue, if you wanted to do red or pink, that's 5,000. So there's a bunch of different options. And then there's also that, you know, other additional court that you could get on the back. But as far as the, the seven circuits, that, that's consistent, that stays the same.
And, and that, so if somebody went to Grand Blank City, I mean, it's the same seven. So, okay, and communities have more than one of these, so...
Yeah. I could see us eventually having one here on our campus, you know, when we make, send them more of a park place.
Right. Mr. Kilmer?
We could approach the Grand Blank Arts Council, too, to see if they were interested in providing...
Want some of the art?
Some artwork, yes.
Or even, like, the schools.
We had their hand up. I think, Mr. White, you had your hand up?
It was mine was liability question, I already got it.
Okay. So it sounds like, you know, people are in favor on the board, you know. I think we should look at, as Mr. Raridan or Dr. Raridan said, you know, look at that wall and firm that up. But I, I'd, I'd go along with, you know, approving this tonight, and then if we need to come back and add something to it for some of the things we want to customize it with, maybe you can research that part of it further.
I was going to say, we can wait and do, you know, at the next meeting, we can approve once I get, I can get all of this, as far as the amounts for, if you wanted to do this art option, this art option, just so you guys can see.
I think we go ahead with approving this tonight, and then whatever you want to add on, you bring back to us. And then we'll, we'll look at that separately. But I think it's great for the community.
Yeah.
And that's a good tone for what we want, you know, Grand Blank Township to be about, and what we, our, our park, what it's about. I'd even put a couple of the cameras, the security cameras over there on it, so at night, you know what's going on there. But anyways, we had a motion, it was supported, we had discussion.
Motion by Hugo, supported by Raridan. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Senia, what kind of timeframe would be looking at on this? Any idea?
As far as the plan would go in?
Right.
We would have it delivered on a fine day, and so we could do it. I mean, I don't know as far as installation, that's the only thing they just say, when exactly, what we'd be doing this summer.
So this summer, coming up? Well, that'd be fabulous. Okay. Mr. Lemina?
As we work through and get more of the questions answered, and when we make that commitment, because I forgot what the cutoff date was, we have like 30 days, or whatever it is, we will ask the board to make that decision then on funding, whether it's ARPA-funded, or if you want to come out of millage funds, or combination, or we see what kind of donors we get, or whatever.
Right, okay. I think there's some other foundations, too. I think this is something that would be great for getting some, some funds for.
Okay.
Okay, somebody else have a comment? Okay.
Item 8C.
All right, thank you. The board will consider resolution 23-9 to authorize the purchase of service credit years for the MERS-defined benefit plan by Officer Michael O'Brien. Mr. Lemina?
This comes to the board back quite a few years ago, and maybe David remembers, I think I included it in here, was in the 90s, or 1998. The board made a resolution that allowed employees to purchase service credit. So what that does is, someone who has come from another municipality, another agency, came to work, like Officer O'Brien here, they have the ability to purchase some service credit to go to their MERS. Well, why would the board want to allow that to happen? They have to pay the full amount, the actuarial realized amount. So they want to purchase service credit and have it in with this current plan. MERS has actuaries who put that together and then provide it to the employee, saying, this is a dollar amount, basically, that you're going to have to pay in order to add that service credit to your current employer. It doesn't cost the township any funds, it's entirely put on by the employee. So the request before you tonight is exactly that. It's from Officer O'Brien, who's looking to add some of his additional service credit to his MERS-defined benefit plan.
Dr. Raridan?
Yeah, and so, just, just, I guess, verify. So the service credit doesn't get purchased towards the medical, well, they're in a different medical plan now, aren't they?
No, new employee?
Everybody that's hired now has, we don't give them medical when they retire, correct?
Correct.
So that really wouldn't affect us anyway?
Nope.
And how many years can, can you buy? Is it, it used to be five, I don't remember?
Um, I didn't include his actual forms in here, because obviously it's identifiable information in there. And I...
How many years do we allow, I guess, is...
The resolution didn't specify. The resolution just says that we, the board made the resolution that allows the purchase of service credit. There is a limit.
I think their contract, it, it used to be...
Up to five years.
Yeah, the, the contract used to set out a limit. I, I, I don't remember, I'm just curious.
And I don't have, like I said, I don't have his in here, but it seems to me it was two years that he was purchasing. Yeah.
Oh, that two years would be well within it.
Yeah.
Any thoughts? Mr. Fike?
I have a question. So this is for Officer O'Brien, one guy. Could others step forward and do the same thing?
Sure. It's, it's available to all of them. It is in their employment agreements or in their collective bargaining agreements. And then it has to be in our MERS documents as well, whether the township allows that sort of thing. Like I said, the original resolution that I found was from May 14th of 1998, that the board passed the resolution that allows an employee to purchase service credit. So it has been included in our MERS documents, and it is in our MERS agreement. It's in their collective bargaining agreement. You know, I don't know if you guys were to say no, that he, he wasn't able to purchase it. I don't...
I don't even think you can say no, frankly. I mean, it's already, it's, again, it's part of the plan. We, we have done these in the past. I don't know if this board has. And I don't know if I've seen one in, in quite a while, but they used, and I, and I brought this up with Ms. Nedzwicki, that there used to be a fairly complicated... with Ms. Nedzwicki, that there used to be a fairly complicated resolution that MERS would put forward that might have some of the additional information that Dr. Raridan was asking about, but they don't do that anymore, apparently. But the point is, it's all, it's already sort of instilled in your agreement, we, they have, we have done it in the past, and so this is really, it's at the employee's option.
And the, you know, David brings up a good point. They used to have a complicated resolution that was transcribed by MERS that we passed in the past. Their new form basically just requires an authorized signer, myself, to sign and approve it, but we always had the requirement that a motion or a resolution was passed by the board. Then when you read the documents, MERS said, well, you don't have to submit the official board resolution anymore, just have Dennis sign it and go ahead and send it along, but when you read the document, it actually says, by resolution of the legislative body, and so I think that one resolution is what they're saying, is the authorization to go ahead and move forward, but I wanted to bring it before you guys, because we'd always done it in the past, is that the board took the official motion to authorize the purchase of the service credit.
We have a motion, actually, Mr. Fike, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Okay, motion by Fike, supported by Raridan. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, future agenda items, Mr. Lemina, anything that?
Two items that I know are going to come up before you. One, like we mentioned earlier, we had met with Michael from PFM Asset Management, who handles the township's investments. We, he gave us a report that we thought was pretty informative, and we did ask him to come back. He's got the next three meeting dates, and he's going to send me back shortly, which one of those dates is going to work for him. He can walk you through the same presentation that we saw yesterday, but it'll kind of give you the history, and again, we brought them on, literally gave them the money the month before COVID hit, so they've been managing our investments through a very tricky period, but you'll see that information in the report, and you saw an email, if you checked your email earlier today, I sent out just a copy of our investment report. It was last authorized and approved, reviewed and approved in May of 2020, I think, by the Board of Trustees. That includes all of the relevant information that discusses our investment policy, how it's invested, who we're allowed to invest in. Those things are very closely transcribed by Public Act 20, that says what we're allowed to invest in, and, and of course, PFM, as professional money managers, also had to provide documentation for us, that they followed not only the Public Act 20, but our own investment policy was adopted by them, in order to have them, so that's going to come before you, I think, something I said in the next three meetings, I think that will be very good. Go ahead and look over the investment policy. In the meantime, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, anything else, anybody else? And then Mr. Roberts will email us probably the schedule on the strategic plan.
And one other thing I did get, we talked about doing that public-private partnership.
Right.
With developers for Tech Village. They called me late yesterday and said that their legal counsel had looked through the agreement that we had drawn up. They had a question on just, on a couple of very, very minor things, but because the time for getting it into the packet had passed, I said, have your attorney redline and send a copy over. It will be in your next agenda, so we can move that forward, but I think the gist of it is, we're good to go, we're going to get that engineering started on Tech Village, very exciting. They also asked if the board would be willing, or the township would be willing to hold an open house to kick off that Tech Village sometime over the next couple of weeks as well, and so we're going to work on the logistics of that, we'll get the information out if you guys want to attend, but they asked if we would kind of host it here in the auditorium, I think it's a great idea.
Even if we wanted to do something with the Enterprise Park as well, I know there's been even more interest in that development as well.
Yeah, we met with them earlier today, very excited, a new project coming in Grand Blank Enterprise Park that will bring a beverage distributorship on a 20-acre parcel over into Enterprise Park. So we're excited to see that project coming as well, just shows you the impact that the DDA continues to have in being able to bring in, those are 200 jobs that will be coming into Grand Blank Township with that beverage distributorship.
Mr. Fike?
So does that mean Enterprise Park is built out?
No, that means three of the parcels have occupants, and there's still a couple parcels to go.
Oh, okay.
One's still a large 50-acre parcel with the I-75 frontage.
Okay.
So lots of good property still available, if anybody knows anybody. Okay, with that, we'll move to board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything to report?
Nope, our meeting was canceled last week, and our next meeting is April 6th.
Mr. White, anything?
Our monthly meeting, our monthly meeting is canceled as well.
Okay, Mr. Fike, can you, Metro Line?
No, this month.
Dr. Raridan?
Good.
Mr. Kilmer?
Yeah, the, we touched on this last meeting, the, there's a couple of decorative benches that have been proposed for the library area. I talked to the mayor yesterday, and the problem is, nobody's sure whether these are going in the commons or in the, on the library property. I told them that if they were going on the commons property, it shouldn't be a problem, because they want to apply for a grant, but if it was going on strictly on the, the library property, that's not ours, and we probably.
You mean just the opposite, the commons?
Yeah, that's what I.
Library, okay.
So that's up in the air.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Kilmer. Clerk Robertson, anything?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Laddie, anything?
Just, I sent out correspondence to you all. If you have any questions regarding it, feel free to either call me or email me, and I'm happy to respond.
Okay, just a few things that I'll report on before we get to Mr. Lemina. One is, I think the board is aware that we actually sent correspondence to corporate counsel for the County Board of Commissioners with regard to our stance and concern with the operation of Tennessee County 911 and the dispatch policy that they're following, and are concerned that it does not follow state statute or the county protocol. We also sent, from our attorney, Fabian Schultz and Okamas, we sent correspondence to the Division Director for the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Bureau of Emergency Preparedness, and also Bruce Trevithack, who's the Executive Director of the Tennessee County Medical Control Authority, with a complaint regarding the consortium dispatch. And we have not received any correspondence back regarding those communications, but basically putting them on notice that we're aware that these, this way of operating does not fall within state statute or the local medical control policy and procedures, so we want to make sure that if there is a lawsuit, that we have notified everybody of our position, and that we are not working in concert with these activities, but we have not received any communication back. Those letters were sent on February 15th. I know that for a fact that our letter was, was sent to Mr. Leighton's office, was distributed to the Executive Committee of the 911 Consortium. I have received a couple of phone calls from members of that regarding that communication. With regard to, just something, a point of interest, whenever, you know, we have a heavy snowfall, like we did this past weekend, the phone here at the township starts to ring, and my email and voicemail with people at their mailbox, it is not the snowplows that hit the mailboxes that knock those off, just in case you're talking to anybody. It's, it's actually the weight of the snow and ice that they're scraping off the road. When that flies through the air, it actually hits the mailbox, and those posts, after 10, 15, 20 years, get dry rot at the base, and when they're hit with any kind of impact, they snap right off. The claim is that our snowplow drivers are driving too fast and run them over. Well, if they ran those things over, they'd be smashed to bits, but typically, they're just laying in the yard, and it's because the snow, the weight of the snow has hit them, and that's why when you go to northern cities, you see people building like protective barriers between, on the side where the snowplows will be snowing to try and stop them hitting it. But I think we're going to do some things on social media, somebody told me, in the fall, I think Mr. Boggs was telling me, that promotes, hey, take a look at your mailbox and just see if that post needs replacing before winter, so just in case you're out and about and people say, hey, you know, the other thing is, those snowplows have to be going a certain speed in order to move the snow, you know, they can't go 10 miles an hour and have that snow move off the road. They have to have some, some light behind those trucks in order to move that snow off the road. The beautification, as Ms. Roberts mentioned, I think we're working on that. Our committee has met, and we're going to make a real big effort to try and do some things yet for the spring, and we'll be holding a meeting coming up, I think it's in April, that we'll be bringing together some people from around the, around the township, so we'll be promoting that date in case there's any other groups that want to, to help us. But I think we're going to make a big difference. Let's see, what else? And we did receive some communication that Mr. Lemina forwarded to all of you regarding a resident on Balden Road, and Mr. Lemina or myself would be glad to discuss, anybody that has questions with regard to that property. One thing I think that, I think Mr. Lemina, at some point, if you could, I think one of the things that we don't tell enough is some of our successes, and I think one of the things that we've, you've done, and Ms. Roberts, have really assembled a huge list of grants that we've received over the past year. I know, you know, we've heard of some, some grants in the community that go towards the library and what have you, but I think there's some significant grants that the township has been able to put together that probably total millions of dollars. I think, you know, at some point, if we had a list of what those were, at least you can identify to the board public that the money that we're able to put together to go towards projects, you know, isn't taxpayer money, that's, you know, helping this community, I think that would be awesome. And then I see, Mr. Kim here, I'm sure you're going to probably talk a little bit about that, so that's all I have at this time. Mr. Lemina?
Couple things. A big topic of discussion, and you guys all got your tax assessment notices, and for the first time since Proposal A went into effect, as you know, your taxable value can only grow at 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. Well, for the first time that I'm aware of, we hit that 5%. So a lot of people saw an increase in their taxes, and we're fielding an inordinate amount of phone calls in our assessing office, and Melissa Roberts' phone as well, folks who want to know why we raise their taxes. If you take a look at that inflation rate multiplier on your assessment notice, you see that 1.05 is the multiplier, that's a 5% increase on your taxable value. It's been so historically low, especially when we were going through, we even had negative numbers for a while, which is also was unheard of after the 2008 recession, and we went through a couple of years where we actually had a negative multiplier on taxable value. So not only did, were we losing value when we were doing our assessments, both assessed and taxable value was dropping, then we were even putting a negative multiplication factor on it, bringing it down even more. Now you're seeing the reverse of that. We had high inflation last year, as much as 9%, but that did have an impact. That number is set by the State Tax Commission. You can come and argue Board of Review, you can try to take it to a Michigan Tax Tribunal if you don't like the Board of Review, but we cannot change that number. Board of Review cannot change that number. That 5% is applied to every single property in the entire state of Michigan by the State Tax Commission, the Treasury Department, who comes up with that number, so that there's nothing we can do, everybody felt it, I saw it in my own, you know, and again, if you've owned your house for a long time, your assessed value should still be considerably higher than your taxable value, but the township did not raise your taxes, the board did not raise your taxes, it wasn't through anything that was done locally. Again, it's, the multiplier is assessed every year by the State Treasurer's Office, and we can adjust that even if we would have liked to do it. The good news is, our taxable values across the township will go up and give us additional revenue because we're getting that 5%. So from a revenue standpoint, it actually is good for us, especially after, I mean, it took us nearly 14 years to come back from the recession, to get back to the taxable value that we had prior to, including all of the new development. So we're still considerably lower, and if you look at your tax bill, pull one out from 2007, and pull one out from this year, if you've been in your home all that time, you're probably still paying less in taxes than you were back at that time, although there are some new millages added, like for the arts and schools and whatever. So I think that's important, just for people to know. The other thing is that if you get a email from me that's asking you to do crazy things, I assure you, that is not me. I have been informed by two members of our DDA board so far this evening, that I'm sending out spoofed emails. Take a look at the actual email address, it does not say lemit@townshipgrandblank@mi.us, it says something crazy. So do not click on any links if you get them in emails from me. So far, it's only impacted the DDA board members, and David, I warned you too, because you're probably also on that list. And lastly, I'd like to thank the board. As you know, it was a bit of a process as we worked through us moving forward, and I was able to, through your help, bring on the Assistant Superintendent, he just happens to be in the audience this evening. So I thought I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to you guys Matt Kimmer, and Matt, if you wouldn't mind coming up, just so that I know that not everybody might not be familiar with you, but they will be getting much more familiar with you as we move forward.
Good evening, Mr. Kimmer.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I love this community. I love the people we work with here, the residents. I've been here about 16 years now.
Speak up a little.
Yeah, I can speak up a little bit, absolutely, move the mic up here a little bit. Been here 16 years at the township. Started out in the GIS realm, Geographic Information Systems. I've worked quite a bit with the Public Works Department, Water and Sewer, and now, you know, took on some of the permitting of the Building Department, building out that process, the online permitting process, cleaning up some things here and there. Just, again, real excited to get started here, you know, but part of what I'll be doing is getting the business licensing program up and running. Also, in charge of the park's operations. We have such a gem, such an asset there, Bicentennial Park. You know, there's so many things we can do out there, so many opportunities there for us to improve quite a bit of the facilities out there, and really step it up a bit, and make that, make that asset shine. With the business licensing program, we're looking at getting BSNA software, similar to the permitting software that we have right now, to get that up and going. I do have, you know, some knowledge of getting that up and running, so I'm looking forward to getting that going as well in that system. Yeah, and, you know, strategic plan, I believe, in May, as far as parks facilities and the business licensing program, that's coming up in May, so I've got, you know, a couple months here to get going and deliver something on that end. You know, it will be a bit of a transition here, as I hand over some of my old responsibilities and work my way into the new ones. It'll take a bit of time here, but, you know, and just a big thanks to all of the employees here at the township that have helped me to get to where I am today, and, you know, to be, you know, be one heck of an asset here for the township for hopefully years to come.
Okay, well, very good.
Thanks, guys.
Congrats. Any questions for Mr. Kimmer?
One.
Yes.
Smart statement. You got to remember, there's old ears here.
I got it. I got it.
That's the, that's the servant leader in him coming out.
Wait, don't you coach basketball?
I do. I do. Basketball, baseball, football, you name it. So, you know.
And, uh, and he's a regular fan at, uh, anything Spartan. So whether it's football or basketball.
I knew I liked you for it.
Well, we're, we're very pleased that, uh, Dennis brought you forward and, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, some great things. So thank you, Matt. And I, I know from my time here that, uh, you're, been a great asset already to the township. So we look forward to, to working with you.
Appreciate that.
Excellent. Is a motion to adjourn in order, Mr.?
Where will your office be? I mean, where, where are you going to be?
Over on the administrative side.
Is there a place for him over there?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. All right.
He's already in it.
How is the air and the heat over there?
Half of my stuff is here. Half of my stuff is there and.
All right.
We'll make that transition.
The heat, Ms. Hugo wants to know, or the air.
Here, the heat, the airflow, is it okay?
It's okay. I, I haven't had long enough to really sit down and get a gauge on, uh, the environment.
We're going to keep moving around.
Yeah. Okay.
One, thank you, Mr. Kimmer. Uh, Mr. Limina, one other point with regard to the tax issue is, you know, we had a lot of houses sell over the past, uh, year and a half. And the other issue on social media, besides us, uh, just trying to raise people's taxes, if you read the social media, we're, we're just trying to raise their mon, you know, raise more money. But, um, the other thing that's happened is the uncapping. And, uh, that's when somebody buys a property that probably has been held by same owner for twenty years. And then when somebody new buys it, uh, the taxes are uncapped. But there's a great explanation of that on our website. If anybody, you know, is talking, one of our board members says, oh my gosh, my taxes went up. Ask them if they bought their house in the last year or so. And, uh, if they did, that might be what they're experiencing in their, the assessing department also put out something great for social media. And that's just explaining the tax bill that people receive. Uh, we also have on, on the website a breakdown of people's property taxes on where they actually go. That, you know, we only keep seventeen percent here at the township. The rest of it goes to everybody else in the county and, um, some great explanations there. So, very good. Anything else?
Is a motion to adjourn in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is.
Then I will make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Support, Ms. Hugo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
We are adjourned at not eight thirteen PM.
Thank you.